I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. The November 13, 2018 school board meeting for the county of Polk, or for Polk County, is called to order. And Madeline, if you don't mind, we'd like to ask you some questions. So you attend Lena Vista, 3rd grade. What's your favorite subject?
Science.
Science. Anything in particular?
Um, no.
Just science in general? And what would you like to do when you grow up?
I want to be a veterinarian.
Oh, good for you. Well, that makes sense. Do you have any favorite animals?
A dog.
Very good. What, do you have a dog?
Yeah.
What's your dog's name?
Luna.
Oh, very nice. And do you have anyone with you here this evening, family?
I have my mom, Erin Larson Pease, my principal, my Mrs. Sharp, and my assistant principal, Mrs. Burgwell.
Okay. If you would stand, please, we'd like to recognize you. Well, Madeline, thank you so much for leading us in our pledge of allegiance. You did a remarkable job and we appreciate it so much.
Thank you.
Have a great year. Um, let's see, where are we? So Madam Superintendent, do we have any revisions to the agenda?
Yes, we do. Add item E-46 Resolution 2018-2019-10 Student Crime Watch Program. Item R-47 Superintendent's Contract and Salary Add Backup. That concludes the revisions for today.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to accept the November 13, 2018 school board meeting agenda as revised.
Mr. Chair, I move to accept this agenda as revised.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and discussion. So the motion on the floor is to accept the November 13, 2018 school board meeting agenda as revised. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we have some special recognitions?
Yes, we do. I would like to ask school board member Sarah Beth Reynolds step to the front for our special recognitions at this time. Dr. Michael H., Chief Academic Officer, will present the Florida Mathematics Educator of the Year recognition.
Good afternoon. School board members, superintendent, and community members. It is truly an honor for me to share with you the recognition that one of our educators here in Polk County received here recently. Mr. McNaulson, a senior director for our school district, was recently recognized as the Florida Mathematics Educator of the Year. That is quite an honor, not only to be recognized by your work that you do within your school district, but by your peers throughout the whole state. Mr. McNaulson was recognized as the Mathematics Educator of the Year. Let me share a little bit about with you, Mr. McNaulson's journey into this, into our district. Mr. McNaulson started his journey 25 years ago. He taught secondary mathematics for the first 10 years. The next 10 years, he was actually a curriculum specialist with the Manatee County School District. He joined our school district in 2014 as the senior director of mathematics. He has been the president of the Florida Mathematics Association. He's the past president of the Supervisor for Mathematics Educators. And he also serves on the Executive Council for the Florida Council of Mathematics Teachers as a national delegate. He's been recognized not only in our district, but in the state and nationwide as a leader within mathematics education. Mr. McNaulson attended Florida Atlantic University where he earned his bachelor's degree in mathematics and earned a master's degree from Florida Southern University, University of South Florida. He's been married for 20 years to his wife Julie. They have three children, Jay, Ella, and Wyatt. I want to share with you not only that, but with the contributions that he's made to our school district. He joined us in 2014. Our math proficiency was 44% throughout the school district. Currently, in 2018, it is at 51%. So it's truly an honor for me to share with you not only the recognition that his peers has given him, but also say thank you to him for the work that he's done within our school district. Mr. McNaulson. Mr. McNaulson, the plaque reads as such. The Florida Council of Teachers of Mathematics presents to Joseph A. McNaulson, Mathematics Educator of the Year, the Kenneth Kidd Award for Outstanding Contributions to Mathematics Education presented to you at the October meeting. So thank you for everything that you've done for our school district and the state within mathematics. Your step up here will get you a...
Thank you. Did you want to say something?
Yeah, please do.
Oh, great. Great, put the math person up in front of the podium. Really, this was, this was a true honor and really it goes to really all of us in Polk County, all the teachers, the administrators, and my team. Because without all that, this is not happening. And just wait, we're only starting here. So great things are on the horizon. So thank you all.
Thank you. As part of the next recognition, we would also like to ask Ms. Hazel Sellers to join Ms. Reynolds in front, please. Next, with Deana Campbell, Child Advocate, Manager of the Guardian at Lydham Program, will present a recognition to the school board.
On behalf of the Guardian at Lydham Program of the 10th Circuit, we are presenting the Florida statewide, sorry, the Polk County School Board with the Community Advocate of the Year for 2018 10th Judicial Circuit Award for the outstanding advocacy on behalf of Florida's abused and neglected children. And I would like to read a letter from our program director, Alan Abramowitz. Congratulations on being named the 2018 Statewide Guardian at Lydham Program Community Advocate of the Year for the 10th Judicial Circuit. Every day, organizations and people in our community do amazing and inspiring work for Florida's abused, abandoned, and neglected children. And every year, the Guardian at Lydham Program is proud to recognize the work that is done in our communities on behalf of these children. Your leadership provides a beacon in your community for others to follow by contributing to the well-being of our fellow citizens. You are helping to, you are helping to ensure that these children have the opportunity to live their best lives and reach their greatest potential. Your dedication and unwavering support to our program is vital for our efforts to advocate for Florida's most valuable children. Thank you for your commitment and for the gift of your time, treasures, and talents on behalf of the Florida Guardian at Lydham Program. Together, we can make a difference in our children's lives. That's from Alan Abramowitz. Thank you.
This concludes our special recognitions for today.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. So at this time, I would invite anyone who would like to come forward and speak to any item on the agenda. So if you'd like to address any item on the agenda, please come forward and do so at this time. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is approval of the amended minutes for the September 18, 2018 work session. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval. Second.
So we have a motion, a second, any discussion? So the motion on the floor is approval of the amended minutes for the September 18, 2018 work session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is approval of the minutes of the October 9, 2018 work session. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval. Second.
So we have a motion, a second, any discussion? So the motion on the floor is approval of the minutes of the October 9, 2018 work session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the October 23, 2018 work session. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? So the motion on the floor is approval of the minutes of the October 23, 2018 work session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the October 23, 2018 school board meeting. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval. Second.
So we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Again, the motion on the floor is approval of the minutes of the October 23, 2018 school board meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. What's the pleasure of the board?
So move.
Second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? So the motion on the floor is approval of the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we move on to our regular agenda. The next item on the agenda is approval of the changes.
You administrator.
Oh, excuse me. I apologize. We have some new administrators. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. We didn't want to leave anyone out. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, we do have one that's joining us this evening. I am pleased to recommend the appointment of Jenny Dyer as Assistant Principal of Citrus Ridge Civics Academy. Ms. Jenny Dyer previously served as the Acting Assistant Principal at Citrus Ridge Civics Academy. She attended Southeastern University, earning a bachelor's degree in human services. She went on to earn her master's degree in educational leadership from Southeastern University. Welcome, Ms. Dyer, and congratulations to you.
Good evening. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you Superintendent Bird and the board for the opportunity to continue to serve the students, the families, and the community over at Citrus Ridge. I have with me tonight my mom, Barbara, my brother Brian, and two of my greatest friends, Becky and Charlene. I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank Mrs. Collins, my regional superintendent, for her support and her guidance over the last couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our administrators for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent, and thank you, Mrs. Fields, for bringing that to my attention.
No problem.
Sorry, we missed that. So now we're moving to our regular agenda. The next item on the agenda is approval of the changes to the superintendent's contract and salary as discussed in the November 13, 2018 work session. What's the pleasure of the board?
So move.
Second.
So a motion, a second, any discussion? So the motion on the floor is approval of the changes to the superintendent's contract and salary as discussed in the 13, 2018 work session. Mrs. Sellers, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to thank Mrs. Bird publicly. You've been a joy to work for. I've seen great things happen under your leadership. The communities appreciate you across this district. And while you are sensitive to our financial situation, we'll never be able to pay you just like our teachers what you deserve, but we're glad that we came to a satisfactory salary and just know that you're greatly appreciated more than what we reflect in our salary package. And thank you, Mr. Chair, for leading this up and doing a good job in getting this done.
Thank you, it's my pleasure. Mrs. Fields, thank you, Mrs. Sellers. Mrs. Fields?
I just wanted to say we had a very in-depth discussion today during the work session about this item. And one of the things that I think was crystal clear is that Ms. Jackie has taken the job seriously of making sure that we are looking at our performance goals and that we have been able to exceed them, and that in itself is remarkable. It's been a team effort. She hasn't done it by herself, but she's been the leader. And just want to commend her for that. And one of the things that we talked about was looking at what other counties are doing as it relates to salaries and benefits. And one of the things that was mentioned this morning is if we look at the market comparison that we had this morning, Seminole County has enrollment, student enrollment of 66,966 students. And their superintendent, to my knowledge, according to what we have here, is making $230,000. And so even with what we are proposing today for Ms. Jackie, we need to make sure that we don't allow her salary or the superintendent's salary to lag and get behind so that it's more competitive and that we'll be able to keep a quality superintendent as we have now here, leading and guiding our district. And so I'm very supportive of this, and I just want to publicly thank Ms. Jackie for doing a great job. I've been a remarkable leader, a genuine person, and she's really wanting to do what's best for our students. And so I will be supporting this recommendation.
Thank you, Mrs. Fields. Mr. Harris, did you have some comments?
She covered it quite well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? So again, the motion on the floor is approval of the changes to the superintendent's contract and salary as discussed at the November 13, 2018 work session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is item R-48, and this is approval of the shared use agreement with Woodland Wonders Incorporated. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval. Second.
So we have a motion, a second, any discussion? Okay, so the motion on the floor is approval of the shared use agreement with Woodland Wonders Incorporated. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So at this time, the next item on the agenda is item R-49. These are policy updates, and as such, they require a public hearing. So if anyone is interested in discussing or has any comments they'd like to make about the public policy updates, I would encourage you to come up in just a moment. I think the first thing we'd like to do is hear the list of policy updates, please. From Mrs. Dodge.
Good evening. Wendy Dodge, Director of Legislative Affairs and Policy. This evening, we have two sets of policy updates for you. The first is a set of recommendations for update by staff. The first being 3120, employment of instructional staff. 3430 is leaves of absence. 3431 is bereavement leave, and that is a new policy. And 5230 is late arrival and early dismissal. And that is the list of updates that have been recommended by staff. The next list are policy updates that have been recommended by Niola. The first is 165.3, special meetings. Then we have 5200, attendance. 5225, absences for religious holidays. 6320.01, vendor preference, and that's being renamed selection of contractors and subcontractors. 7430.01 is environmental health program. 7440.01 is protection of personnel and property, and that policy is being deleted. 8340 is letters of reference and disclosure of information regarding former or current employees. 8406 is reports of suspicious activity and potential threats, and that is a new policy. Insurance, excuse me, 8710 is insurance, risk management, and claim settlement. 8810 is the American flag. And 9210, parent organizations will be deleted, and the language from that will be put into your last policy update. 9211, which is guidelines for external and internal support organizations.
Thank you, Mrs. Dodge, for reading those policy updates into the record. Is there, at this time, I would open the floor to anyone who would like, or has questions or would like to comment on any of the policy updates. Anyone from the general public? Okay. So in that case, I would entertain a motion to approve the school policy updates as submitted.
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Any questions for Mrs. Dodge from the board? Okay, so the motion on the floor is approval of school board policy updates as submitted. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Dodge. Madam Superintendent, do you have a report for us?
I do have a brief report. The reorganization of the school board will take place on Tuesday, November 20, at 9:00 a.m. in the school board auditorium. The next work session will be held in the superintendent's conference room at 12:30 p.m. on Tuesday, December 11, 2018, followed by the 5:00 p.m. school board meeting held in the school board auditorium located at 1915 South Floro Avenue. I also would like to thank the public for your support in our sales tax referendum. This will allow us to continue building and renovating our schools, expansions, security upgrades, and building new buildings where there is a need for our schools and our staff. So I do want to thank the public for their support with our sales tax. Also, I'd like to remind the public that next week is Thanksgiving week. Came up on us very quickly, but all schools and district offices will be closed next week while our families go out and enjoy their families over the holidays. Also, please remember to have a safe holiday. If you're traveling, please be safe. And at the conclusion of my announcements, I would also like to thank Mr. Harris and Ms. Sellers for their time on the school board. And also, I would like to say thank you for having confidence in me as a superintendent. Thank you so much. I really appreciate your support, what you've given not only to me and the staff, but to the students and the community of Polk County. Thank you to both of you. That concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Superintendent Bird. So at this time, we would like to recognize Mrs. Sellers and Mr. Harris for their service on the school board. And I'm going to come down front, and I think Mrs. Cunningham's going to read their accomplishments for us.
I'll give you all a chance to go down front. Go ahead. Go. Yeah, you're both supposed to go. Come on. Ready, Mr. Chair? Okay. It is my distinct honor and pleasure to recognize two outstanding board members for their service and dedication to our school district. I would like to begin with Mr. Tim Harris, District 7. Mr. Harris began his service to the district in the classroom for Polk County Public Schools from 1975 to 1994. He then served the district as a contract administrator and teacher resource specialist from 1998 to 2006, when he was elected to serve on the Polk County School Board. Mr. Harris has served on the school board for 12 years, and during this time, he has served in the following roles for our district. Vice Chair from 2008 to 2010. Calendar Committee, 2008, 2011, 2012. Insurance Committee, 2008, 2013. Central Florida Public School Boards Coalition as voting member or alternate, 2009, 2012, 2015, 2018. Polk Vision Steering Committee, 2009. Facilities and Operations Division, including the Sales Tax Oversight Committee, 2010 and 2012. Polk Education Foundation Board of Directors, 2010, 2017. Wellness Committee, 2011. Polk County Head Start Policy Council Executive Board Liaison, 2013, 2018. Support Services Division, 2013. Boys and Girls Club 21st Century Advisory Committee, 2014. Leadership for Educational Achievement and Development, 2014. During Mr. Harris's time as a member of the school board, he also served our community as Member of the Lakeland Area Chamber of Commerce's Leadership Lakeland Class 26. Polk Vision's Leadership Polk Class 6. Board of Directors for Mid-Florida Credit Union. President-elect Florida School Boards Association, 2015. President, Florida School Boards Association, 2016. An immediate past president, Florida School Boards Association, 2017. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Mrs. Cunningham. Mr. Harris, in grateful appreciation for your years of outstanding service and devotion to the children and citizens of Polk County from 2006 to 2018, I'd like to present you with your picture and your plaque from out front. We'd also like to present you with this beautiful plaque. Thank you very much.
Next, I would like to recognize Mrs. Hazel Sellers from District 3. Mrs. Sellers began her service to the district in the classroom for Polk County Public Schools from 1973 to 1996. She then served the district as the TRST of the Gifted Program from 1996 to 2002. Mrs. Sellers has served on the school board for 16 years, and during this time, she served in the following roles for the district. Board Chair, 2005, 2011, and 2012. Board Vice Chair, 2004 and 2007. Human Resources Services Committee, 2008. Insurance Committee, 2009, 2010, 2012, 2013, and 2014. Policy Committee, 2009, 2010, 2012, 2013. Facilities and Operations Division, including Sales Tax Oversight Committee, 2011. Polk Vision Education Committee, 2011, 2014, 2015. Claims Committee, 2012. Polk Education Foundation Board of Directors, 2013. Business Services Division, 2014. Charter Review Committee, 2014. Polk County Head Start Policy Council, 2015. FSBA Legislative Committee, 2017, 2018. FSBA Board of Directors, 2017 and 2018. During Mrs. Sellers's time as a member of the school board, she also served our community as Trustee of the Florida Education Investment Trust Fund. Member of the Florida High School Athletic Association's Public Liaison Advisory Committee. Central Florida Regional Planning Council Board. Guardian at Lydham Speak Up for Children Board. Polk Academy's Advisory Board. Board of Interact Alliance. President of the Florida Association for the Gifted. Member of the Bartow Rotary Club. And member of the Bartow Zonta Club. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Mrs. Cunningham. Mrs. Sellers, in grateful appreciation for years of, your years of outstanding service and devotion to the children and citizens of Polk County from 2002 to 2018...
and devotion to the children and citizens of Polk County from 2002 to 2018, we have your picture from out front and your plaque. But I'm not going to give this to you. I'm going to set it at your station because I think you're going to have your hands full.
Speech.
Would, Mr. Harris, would you like to say a few words?
You can say a few words.
Then I, this is my board report. Thank you. I have loved serving with this board. Anything that we did, we did as a board. We didn't do anything individually. I'm humbled that my community allowed me to do this for so many years. There are things that I will miss, but I still intend to be active for children. So thank you for being part of my family for 16 years.
Yay.
Mr. Bridges, do we have an attorney's report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It has been many, many years since I have shared this platform with the school board that did not include Hazel Sellers and Tim Harris. And I would like to say to you both that I treasure your grace and your dignity. I treasure your friendship. And I have always known that whatever your hand found to do, you would do it with your might. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. We have an auditor's report from Mrs. Matthews? Okay, so we'll have our board member reports. We'll start with Mrs. Cunningham.
Thank you, yes. And I just want to congratulate Mr. Harris and Ms. Sellers on making this wonderful step we were talking about earlier today. And so we already have several committees they're going to be appointed to. They think they are retiring, but guess what? It's not going to happen quite that fast. So y'all get ready because we know you want to stay involved and continue to impact students' lives in a very positive way. So thank you for your service. We really appreciate it. I also wanted to say a huge thank you, and the people know who they are who work diligently, tirelessly for our sales tax. That was just so exciting to be able to watch the poll results come in on the night of the election and to see how many people across our county really did understand the need for the renewal of a continuation of our sales tax. So I know we talked to Ms. Usher today, and we're so excited that this passed and to try to find out what are some of the priorities that are going to be coming our way. And she assured us at our next meeting in December, our work session rather, that she would be outlining those plans. So thank you, Ms. Usher. Thank you, Ms. Byrd. Thank you, everyone who had a hand in this. There's a lot of kids that are going to benefit so tremendously from this wonderful gesture by our voters and our constituents. So I say thank you. And I just want to conclude by wishing everybody a very happy Thanksgiving, and I hope each of you can spend some quality time with your family and friends and get some relaxation. And I always try to remind everybody that we do have the coolest library cooperative in the county. So I always encourage everybody to read, read, read. And if you're looking for a particular book and your area town library doesn't maybe carry it, they can have it brought from a different area to your library. That was established several years back, and it's such a wonderful thing for students to be able to get their hands on the books that they want to read. So I encourage our students to read over Thanksgiving. Relax, but take a book and read it. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Cunningham. Mrs. Ellins, I know you said that would be your report, but you're welcome to offer some additional comments.
It was my report.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a couple shout-outs tonight. The first is to Harrison. I got to attend their performance of Hairspray a few weeks ago, which was incredible. I've seen Hairspray twice on Broadway, and I really think that our high school kids could give them a run for their money. It just was a phenomenal show. The scenery, the tech, every show I go to there, I tell Dr. Ward that I'm going to come and steal his technicians because I work at a theater too, that it's hard to find technicians that are as wonderful as his students, and they don't get enough credit. The second thing is We Three. Thank you to all of our staff and schools that participated in We Three. It's, I will tell you, if you want to go and just sample the food that our culinary programs have, it is, it's amazing what these kids are cooking because I did not learn to cook in school, and I really wish I had. And then the last thing is a shout-out to Winter Haven High School because they had a visit from the Cambridge International Corporation two weeks ago, and they have three teachers that have not only scored on par with what the average is, but they are well above with their student scores, pass rates for the Cambridge ACE exams, which is incredible. It's a very new program, and those teachers are doing awesome things. So just to highlight that. Again, like everyone also said, thank you for passing our sales tax. We're so excited to get started on hopefully building a new high school in the Northeast, is what I'm hearing. But thank you, thank you for all of your work in the community and for our staff that's been instrumental in getting the word out that we are doing great things in Polk County. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Mrs. Fields?
Basically, ditto what's been said, but I just want to let Ms. Sellers know that you will be greatly missed, and thank you for your dedication to our students and to our schools and to our community. And 16 years is a long time, and you've been committed and you've been faithful. And we know that you were just a phone call away, and it seems to me like Ms. Cunningham has already gotten you to commit to something. I don't know what that looks like. We haven't always agreed, but we have always agreed that we were always going to at least be respectful of each other's difference of opinion, and I really appreciate that. And Mr. Harris, what can I say about you? You have been committed. You have been a good example for us as it relates to the state commitment, being able to be the president of the Florida School Board Association. You're the second school board member in our district to do that. Andrea Whitley was the first, and that says a lot for you and your commitment. You are really dedicated to training. You really believe in that, and you lead by example. We haven't always agreed, but we've always agreed to not be unkind to one another, that we can't have a difference of opinion. And I want to thank you for your service to the students and to the schools, and we wish you the best. And again, my understanding is that you were just a phone call away as well, and God bless you. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Fields. Now, before we get to Mr. Harris, as I understand it, he has a rather lengthy report this evening. So, Madam Superintendent, I would like to offer you an opportunity. Did you have any final comments you'd like to make to our retiring?
I did ask Mr. Harris where was that clock so we can keep up with the time and his report. Oh, it's Hourglass. Again, you know, just thank you both, and I know you're a phone call away. And thank you, Ms. Cunningham, for getting the commitments for them serving on committees to continue the work and moving not only just our school district forward, but continuing the work and the commitment for helping our children within our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Now, Mr. Harris, I'm going to offer some comments before we get to you. First of all, earlier today, we had a little gathering for Mrs. Sellers and Mr. Harris, and I thank them for their guiding hand when I first came on the board because they were terrific in helping me find my way as a board member. I thank them for their service to our community and to our district, and on behalf of the board, wish them all the best in their future endeavors. And I think we already have their commitment on some committees, so that looks good. Thank you both so much. You've been, you've been a pleasure to work with, and I've enjoyed it very much. I also want to, about a year and a half or so ago, Mrs. Fields asked me to kind of take the lead on the half-cent sales tax. And I just want to say thank you to, as I did in the work session today, to all of our employees who were out there working so hard to get the word out. They were educating, did a remarkable job of educating the public about the need for that half-cent sales tax. I'd like to thank Mrs. Byrd, Mr. Bridges, Mr. Peron, Mrs. Pleasant, Mrs. Usher in particular because they also just did a tremendous job in, again, educating the public, telling them what we've done with their tax dollars and how we're going to use them moving forward. I want to thank the PEA. They were partners with us throughout this adventure and did some phone calling for us, got some signs out for us, and I know a lot of other things as well, so thank you for that. I want to shout, I want to give, say a little thank you to Mr. Ashley Troutman. Mr. Troutman, he's here. There he is. Let's give him a hand. Mr. Troutman organized most of the speaking engagements. He engaged the Half-Cent Sales Tax Oversight Committee to help with that, and they were not allowed to advocate, so they educated. Oh, you're looking at me like you... They were not allowed to advocate. They educated, and they were, they took folks along to advocate. But we want to thank him so much for his efforts in organizing those speaking engagements. And finally, our political action committee, they were, well, not finally, our political action committee, there were a lot of folks that helped with that, but in particular, I want to thank, publicly thank Alice Hunt. She is a committee, a community activist who is very involved in engaging our community and especially engaging the business community. And then finally, I'd like to thank our citizens for voting for that, for understanding the importance of that to our school district. And so we appreciate that so much. As I said earlier, now, Mrs. Usher, we get to go to work. So just a heartfelt thank you to everyone who worked so hard for that. And with that, Mr. Harris, I turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to thank those on the night for your support and for the years that we have served together. It has been truly a remarkable 12 years here, and this caps off a 43-year career in education, starting November the 6th, 1975, at Kathleen Junior High School. And speaking of Kathleen Junior High School, I'd like to thank and recognize some folks that have been instrumental in my career, have been helpful in my career, have been supportive in my career in many different ways. And that starts off with my first principal, Mr. Jim Booth. My second principal, he inherited me when Lake Gibson Junior was opened in the fall of '76, and that was Glenn Reynolds. And I learned a lot from Glenn Reynolds in terms of how to be a professional educator and how to be a professional in what you do. I'd like to thank John Stewart for giving me a chance to come to the district office as the contract administrator in facilities. And I worked with Willie Speed and Bob Williams in that position as a contract administrator, and I'd like to thank both of them for their support in my endeavors there. I had a secretary that I inherited, and I could not have picked a better secretary when I was in facilities, Janie Shiver. She really had my back. She knew a lot of the goings-on in the district office. She had worked here for a number of years before I came here, and she was really a godsend, and I certainly appreciate her. A lady that was extremely valuable to me in my career was Shelby Lohan. Shelby was, and I hate to come out and say it, but I've said it a lot of times privately, she was probably the best supervisor I ever worked for in my career. She was absolutely a person that knew how to let people fly, and she also knew how to lead. And she had a phrase that she didn't use often, but you knew when she said it, she meant business. Because she worked her group as a team, but once in a while, she would make the announcement in a meeting, this is a decide and announce moment. And you knew at that point, it wasn't a conversation that the group was going to have, but it was a decision that she had made, and we were going to move forward with it. And I learned a lot about team organization and how to put events together and how to support one another in working with that group at the Applied Technology Education Center. And a couple of current employees that have been very helpful to me, and I certainly want to thank them, they have been supportive not only as employees, but also in the three campaigns when I was running for school board. Marissa Green and Jeanette Crowley. Thank you, ladies, for all of your support and your encouragement. And the numerous campaign helpers in the three campaigns that I did. And last, but certainly not least, my wife, Linda. She has been there and very supportive in my endeavors over these last 43 years and especially over these last 12, serving in public office. And to finish off, I'd like to share with you a quote, but three different versions of that quote, and then I'll end with a prayer. "It's to one's honor to avoid strife, but every fool is quick to quarrel. Keeping away from strife is an honor for a man, but any fool will quarrel. It is an honor for a man to cease from strife, but every fool will be meddling." Those are three different versions of Proverbs 20, verse 3. And I close with St. Teresa's Prayer. May today there be peace within. May you trust God that you are exactly where you are meant to be. May you not forget the infinite possibilities that are born of faith. May you use those gifts that you have received and pass on the love that has been given to you. May you be confident knowing that you are a child of God. Let this presence settle into your bones and allow your soul the freedom to sing, dance, praise, and love. It is there for each and every one of us. Thank you to the citizens of Polk County for this support. Mrs. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Harris.